We're at seven oh one this February fourteen twenty twenty three town council meeting. Please rise.
I believe we just to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which is stands one nation, one God. Indivisible, with no beginning and end.
Item four. Things we have none for this evening, which brings us to item five public petitions communications and public participation. On any subject within jurisdiction of the town council with a two minute limit. If you're online, you get the raise hand function or star nine or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table. And say your name and address for the record, and it looks like we have Claudette Morehouse.
Good evening, everybody. This is Claudette Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tolland. Um, in regards to the contaminated wells, the environmental consultant you hired back in October of twenty twenty-two was supposed to take about three weeks for his report. I'm inquiring about this report and when will it or ever be shared with the public? It's very discouraging at this point that we have waited six years on this matter. One, because of the openness and discussions. Now it seems the town put together a task force with no resident input, but includes the town lawyer. It seems you lawyered up and now everything is an executive session behind closed doors and we are left totally out of the loop. What are we left to think? Is anything being hidden? Is there something we should know? We waited this long and we deserve to be included. We have lost transparency and I find it very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudette. Are there any other residents from the public that would like to speak? All right, going once. Going twice. All right, we'll move to item six, public hearing items, which we have none. Uh, seven A reports of boards and committees, Republic of the Council, uh, firehouse that could be the meeting. Uh, did cancel their meeting for February, will reconvene in March if needed, but I believe they've started demolition of the firehouse and the lead is completely down at this point, so they are moving forward with their March twenty twenty-four expected completion date. And then report to town council liaisons. Uh, I'll start with, uh, I'll start with Councilman Murray.
Hi, um, historic district meets tomorrow, so. Uh, oh, I, we had agriculture meeting last week. Sorry, I forgot about that one. The, we had a, a, a great discussion with town manager Foley regarding farmers market on the green. Um, and I think the agriculture commission seemed to be really excited about the direction that this was going and how uh, the town manager has sort of structured things to be really inclusive with talent businesses, so that there was a lot of excitement about that. I mean, they're also doing some social media outreach and working on a, um, a meeting with local agriculture commissions. And they're working on maybe getting a grant for the Campbell farm property. Would that fit for me?
All right, thank you, Councilman Murray. Councilor Khan. All right, where's your reading?
Yes, uh, planning and zoning met last night. Uh, they got a presentation from D Segregate Connecticut. And a lot of that, um, a lot of that information talked about, um, transit and density of living areas. Uh, the topic often to a program called Work, Live and Ride. And again, uh, these conversations kind of get very lengthy, so I would, I would advise you to go to the minutes or the video to get more information on that. Uh, and then there was also a discussion about so- solar regulation and freestanding, um, solar panels. Uh, and any regulations around that. And then there was also discussion of farm side rees and, uh, and so associated regulations around that, so. Um, there was a, a lot, there are a lot, there's a lot of information that you can get from the minutes and from the video, but those were the three topics that were covered.
All right, thank you, where's your reading? Uh, I was unable to make the conservation commission meeting last Thursday because that was the same time as our capital budget here inside our conference room minutes. And the water commission meets next Wednesday. Councilor Luba?
Well, nothing reported, uh, Mr. Chair, that the, uh, um, Veterans Recognition Commission, uh, we were waiting on our meeting later this week, so.
All right, sounds good. Councilman Urick?
Uh, sure, um, so the mental test first met for a second. Part of the discussion from Bonnie Smith, uh, from Williams McSomething on January thirtieth. I believe she said we'll get the final report, um, in March and we, other means we cancel this month due to president's day. And, um, that we had just had discussion a week before, so. Um, board of, uh, has special need to discuss their budget on February first. And then last week they continue discussions to the, uh, do the revenue on February eighth. Um, Brian, everybody here knows now where the board passed at five to four with a five point nine two increase, um, percent increase. And then our C N B next Thursday with them to discuss, um, this. And then last night, Tolland Preparation Advisory Board met. Thanks, Matt. Um, the little league head coaches came and discussed the field. It's a annual thing they do do. Uh, they're all pretty happy with the fields on youth soccer, wish they were more involved with some of the planning that's going on in town where they are failed and just hopes in the future that though, you know, it'll happen. I guess it used to happen. But other than that, um. They seem overall the coaches were happy. And then, um, obviously Bruce Watts is doing a great job with his department overloaded with the offer money. Filling up every program he's offering, um. President's a totally taken advantage of it and he did mention during that meeting, um, last night that if the subcommittee, uh, for subcommittee wants to see how the breakdown of the numbers, he's more than willing to do that. And they also got a grant. Yeah. There's a funda. Sorry, grant from the Harvard Foundation for Public Given of twenty-five hundred dollars. He's thinking about doing a movie night for the community, maybe the day before. Celebrate Tolland, um, so that will be, uh, a pretty cool thing to do. And it's just a couple more things. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you of me on every committee. Sorry, everybody. And then Commission on People with Disabilities meets this week and, um, AARP, no, ARCA meets next, you know, ARCA meets next week. Um, and I believe Mr. Foley has some additional items that he would like to discuss with the subcommittee. And I know Lisa's on and, um, Brian, on Friday I got email and I think that did about additional funding for ARCA for senior. Um, only senior, I was in, or senior center stuff. Um, it comes up to thirty-one hundred or something, so. I asked Lisa if we should put it on the agenda next week to talk about, but she thought that one should come before the council to discuss. So I don't know if you want to get more information on that, Lisa, or you know about it.
I'm aware of it. Um, it really, I, I, we, we can accept direction from the council. So basically we got some ARCA money. But it's fine tuned to only the senior center, basically, or senior type events and, uh, that sort of thing. So, uh, with that, do you want the, basically are the ARCA committee, uh, deciding and then bringing it to you? Or do you want something comes up for just the seniors, just to bring it directly to the council? Um, I'm happy with either. I have no problem running it through the ARCA uh, committee. Um, if you want us to, to bet out what we're gonna do in first and then bring it to the, the council, so. Uh, either way, I can throw it on the agenda if we want to do it or if not, uh, we don't need to. So what are your thoughts, Kelly?
I'm sorry, Lisa, was it thirty-one hundred or thirty-one? I feel like I had the number wrong. Hold on. I feel like.
Thirty-five thou.
I thought it was, I thought it was higher than thirty-one hundred. Like, it's way too low, but it would be appreciated or any amount.
Which is fantastic, the senior center. Yeah. So, that's it. Okay.
This, well, that was, I think, a, a nice surprise, right, Lisa? Did we know that was coming?
I didn't.
I just got this email and I'm like.
We knew about it. We got the same emails that you got, um, the same on Friday. So, you know, it was all news to us. And, um, maybe later the council can determine how you'd like us to proceed. I, I also have no issue if it goes through ARCA. I'm just thinking, um, if it's just generic straight for the, um, senior center, then maybe it's best to have them come forward with ideas and either directly to council or through the subcommittee. It doesn't matter.
If you, if I think about it, do a straw poll or just don't worry about it for now, but other than that, that's all I have.
To, to respond to that, my initial thought is, is that like, like you know, recreation and other departments that have brought forward ideas, I think it would be good to bring in and her assistant in for the fold of ARCA, but to me, I feel like it should just go through ARCA for initial discussions and have a recommendation and back to the council. Like the recreation funds and other recommendations.
Concur, because then we can track it as well. And when we announce it or put stuff up, this is what we did and won't forget and that won't fall by the wayside.
It'll be in the spreadsheet. Yeah. Yeah, so if anyone has any disagreements with that, otherwise I'll assume silence is, yeah, in agreement.
Murray's giving us a thumbs up.
All right.
All right, great.
Great. That brings us to eight new business. So we have discussion on renewal health insurance by Seth Levine, uh, Lockton Company, right? Seth is online.
Well, we do have Seth and, and so, uh, this is the, um, annual, I believe, uh, decision or discussion on whether or not to continue. Mike, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, just to set up again, we, we normally bring Seth in, uh, when we have an increase. Um, we've been very lucky. The last three out of four years, we had a zero below, but normally we bring Seth to talk, uh, about the increase. So he's gonna talk, uh, a little bit about that and explain, uh, the rationale behind that. So I'll turn it over to Seth if he's there.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yeah.
Can you hear you?
Um, do you know how I can share my presentation? Maybe she should be able.
You should be able to share it. Can you share your screen?
It says it's disabled. Let me.
Lisa, is there what, you're the host, Lisa? Is there a way you can make him host, co-host?
Yeah, just a second. I'm looking. I'll let you know in one second.
Go over to the, on the slide screen, and I think there's like a, yeah, I already, yeah, little bit.
Does it say I want to share screaming? It doesn't, does it?
No, it doesn't actually. I don't know if you're, you're hosting or not from here. It looks like Mike or Lisa are actually co-hosts, so. Mike should be able to, at least they can give him sharing privileges.
I do have it now. I'm just getting in right now.
There we go.
There we go.
Oh. Nope, it just disappeared. You had it for a second.
Can you see it?
No, it just, it was there for a second, but it's a spirit.
Try, try it again, Seth.
Uh.
Let me see. Okay, the joys of Zoom.
Yeah.
Can you see it now?
It's starting to pop up. There we go. We're good. Thank you.
We're good.
Uh, is this view let, is it, I mean, can everybody see this view? Is it okay if I leave it in this so it doesn't pop out again?
It looks fine right now, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think it'll be fine though, if you, if you want to bring it up. I don't think it'll pop out.
Okay. Can you still see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. So, uh, you know, we met with the town and board, um, a little while ago to talk about the budget. And as Mike kind of said, you know, we're really only coming in to talk about increases. And unfortunately this year, you know, we've seen across our, you know, our book that it seems like the, uh, the low levels of healthcare utilization during COVID have finally caught up to us a bit. Um, you know, what's really driving the dollars for the increase that we need for talent is in large claimants. Um, so we're really seeing an increase in both cancer and pregnancies. Uh, which kind of makes sense, uh, if we think about COVID times. Um, you know, for cancer, we, we feel as though not as many people were getting their routine screenings done during that time. Um, so it's not that more cancers are popping up now. We, we feel it's just more are diagnosed now um, and getting treated. And then for pregnancies, you know, we have seen across a lot of our book that just, you know, this year and actually national statistics do back it up as well, that during COVID, there was some uncertainty, um, around having children. So people were, you know, we'll call it actively trying not to. Um, and now we're seeing a bounce back where it's, you know, Tolland used to average around, you know, three to five pregnancies a year. Um, during COVID, it was zero one year and two the next, and now it's nine. So we think that's some normalization there. But wanted to put together, uh, uh, just a quick historical view, and I'll try not to take too much of your time. Um, when we talk about claims and we're talking about seven years worth of claims and we're doing full twelve month periods. The headcount has remained, you know, pretty similar over the years. So it's, the increase is not due to change in the number of people being covered. Really what it comes down to, if you look at the most recent year at seven point eight million, I mean, that's what, that's well above average, one point one million above average. And that's what we're, that's, that's why we're asking for the increase. And that's being driven by, if you look at this slide, this is seven years worth of large claims.
Seth, just a quick heads up, your, your slides actually aren't moving. We're still stuck on the first one.
Oh, sorry. Let me know when you can see the, the next slide.
So far, no, you might have to physically click on them. I don't think it went to the, uh, presentation view, at least on our end.
There you go.
There you go.
Hey. All right, I'm gonna leave that a presentation view. Uh, so this, this slide right here is the same thing, but large claims. So if we look at large claimants over the past seven years. In two thousand, uh, two thousand fifteen to sixteen, there were forty-six claimants that went over two hundred and, or sorry, twenty-five thousand dollars in claims for a total of two point six million dollars. And you can see that, you know, the next year was pretty much the same. And then it went to fifty-one for three point three, fifty-four for three point three. And then forty-six for three point seven, forty-nine for two point eight. But this year we have, in the past twelve months, there's been sixty-six large claimants over twenty-five thousand for a total of four point four million. So that's where a lot of your dollars are coming in. And to put it all together, large claims and claims. You can see that the total portion of claims, and this is why it's important. Total portion of claims that's large claims is just really out of whack this year. If we look at this, this is the best column right here. This is, if I take the gross claims and I remove anything over the pool and then I remove the claimants that are over twenty-five thousand. You can see that the claims year over year have been really steady for talent. I mean, for, just to put it in perspective, for a group of talent size, to see this sort of consistency is really, really good. That means that the, the health plan is being managed well and that the population is, is actively trying to, you know, to do the right things. Large claims, unfortunately, you know, it's really hard to, to prevent those. Um, you know, those are gonna range from anything, you know, broken bones and surgeries and, you know, unexpected things really that happen. Um, that aren't all that preventable. But, so the good news is that the, the regular claims have been steady. It's just this year is a blip in the radar for large claims. Now, as I think about the budget, um, you know, we'd want, what we'd love to see at this point is that the months of claims are starting to go down. That way we can feel comfortable. Uh, you know, in using something maybe a little bit less, but you know, the reason why we're using what we're using is because we've looked at even the next couple of months of claims after these and it still hasn't stabilized. The dollars are just still, you know, higher than, higher than usual. So we're not exactly sure if that'll continue in the next year. But we do have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and account for it. Any questions on it for me? I know I went kind of fast.
Very good, Seth. I'll open the Florida questions. Um, just one quick request, Brian, if you're able to afford a copy of this presentation to the council and I think also for Lisa for the minutes, that would be good just to have as additional things if we're going through the budget process. Um, so one quick question I have Seth is just to clarify, so on average, we're about, looking at some of these charts, we're about a million over the average, uh, compared to prior years. Just like any of that total column is the average, it's like an average of fifty-one claims and sixty-six is this year for this past year and the three point three one one, three six quarters, like a general average and, uh, for this year it's four point four million.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And if you look at, uh, this column right here, that's, this is what it equates to, just saying, you know, large claims are what's driving it because we're, you know, a million, a million over here and a million over here.
So.
That's how it equates, yep. Good question.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions?
That's just.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll get a copy emailed out everybody, but no other questions, Seth. So thank you for coming or being online tonight to share this presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Should I send that to Michael, Lisa and Brian?
Yeah, just, uh, yeah, just send it to us three and we'll get it out. Thank you, Seth.
Welcome. Have a good evening, everyone.
You, Seth.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us eight to eight point two, discussion of the deep recreational trails grant on March acquisition proposal. And we have with us today David Corcoran from Planning Development, Jim Hutton, Christian Chair and Adam Broosman, uh, property owner and also a member of the Conservation Commission.
Oh, um, we have a unique piece of land in town, uh, that, uh, as you mentioned, Adam's here, he's, he, uh, is the current owner. Um, it's got some flexibility as, some options as to what, what we do to move forward with it. Uh, it's, it's over behind, um, the cider mill cemetery, for lack of a better term, the South Cemetery, I believe. Uh, that marsh over there and it goes all, all the way along eighty-four eastbound. Um, just, just south of the eastbound and then to the, basically to the big Y plaza there and the, you know, but the Santini property, it's, it's a beautiful piece of marshy land, but with not with a lot of development options, uh, attached to it. So, uh, this is a discussion to enter into a, uh, grant proposal, I believe, right, David? Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would just add, uh, there's a map in your package, but because it shows what we're thinking, uh, the idea would be that we would, uh, develop, we would purchase the marsh property, uh, and then, and then Adam would enter into, uh, some agreements with us on some of the properties that he's gonna keep, but, but allow for public trail access. Um, we would construct, uh, at, at minimum, a, a parking lot, a, a, a small parking lot with an A D accessible trail out to the marsh with a little overlook point. Uh, and then, and then a primitive trail that would make connecting to the parking lot. And then, and then head east over to a kayak or canoe launch, uh, that would allow for a, a, a blue way trail, which is an eligible activity for this grant. Uh, but with a, a, I could wait, provide kayak access to the marsh. And, and, and you can see we've got some pictures up here for that. Um, as part of this effort, we're also working, uh, we'll also work with the town engineer to see about, uh, making a connection of cider mill road to connect the path, uh, crumbles. Um, if we do that, it's gonna have to be, uh, A D accessible and, and safe, obviously. So we're working with the engineer on, on, but you'll have to estimate to that. Um, but it's our feeling that would be an eligible activity that we could apply for as part of this grant. Um, so the thinking would be that we would buy, uh, the grant with our part of the match, or, or by the match is twenty percent, so we would, uh, allocate our funding out of the open space fund towards the purchase of the marsh. And then use the grant funding to cover the remainder of the purchase and, and make any necessary improvements. And so that's, that's what I've got. I, if you have more for Adam, have anything to add?
It's a pretty good summary. I would just add that this is a uniquely unique, uh, property, not like any other uh, conservation area that we have in our network right now. It allows for this blue age for health that is, again, very unique and so many pictures here are, and it's out in the swamp right now. Um, so I think it's, uh, uh, well worth it for the town to look into this grant and, uh, see if we can win it. And I'd also mention that labor for constructing the trails could in part be done by the conservation corps. And those labor costs can be included as the match. Which might reduce our actual cost we have to take out of our budget.
I'll open to the Florida questions. Uh, I shall start with one really quick. David, do we have to go through, if we move through it for the process, would we need to have any recommendations brought from the land acquisition advisory committee?
Yeah, so I think, I think once we were awarded the grant, we could route through the land acquisition, uh, advisory committee process. I'm trying to remember where we left it off. I know we discussed acquiring this at some point, uh, through that process, but although we can certainly feel through to get, what's will be a different funding source and different amount of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then is, I'm just looking at the math, is there opportunity, um, I know, I think it'd be easy to see or you had another discussion with council that, um, as the Santini project moves forward, there is some conversation that they were interested in making a, a trail that could possibly make its way towards cider mill. Would this, would this benefit that potential kind of public-private partnership trail?
Yep. So, so the Santini is on their site and in their site plan have a, a private sort of walking trail that, that isn't intended for public access at this point. Uh, we've reached out to them, uh, to see if, at this time, they're interested in making a, a trail connection here. Uh, right now their feeling is that they would not, but.
It's way too premature. I'd want to see what the lay of the land looks like.
Yeah.
They haven't, they've reached out, we'll casually buy an email. Um, the Santinis are fantastic people, so I'd want to talk to them face to face and see what we can get done.
Yeah, I think that would be great, because I think, um, even though we do have some sidewalks and some accessibility.
Yep.
From one side of the town to the other over eighty-four.
Yep.
It's not always the safest and this might be a, a more recreational and casual way to get people connected to the trails from one side of the town.
I think if anyone that sees this land up close or anyone who has snuck onto this land to go fishing as a young child, would love to, prior to your ownership, um, would love to, um, have this as a hiking area. It's just being, or canoeing, kayaking, whatever.
And Adam, before this was, you acquired it, this was, um, wild thwart property, right?
Right.
Okay. And he was, um, obviously the, one of the first or the founding A Warden commissioner.
He was actually director of inland fisheries for the state at one point. And, uh, this is his private land and he ran it almost as his own private little preserve.
And actually, one other question for Adam, uh, I know we, when we last did a sidewalk of this property before it got subdivided to the Santinis and to yourself. I know, I think the council right before the pandemic under, uh, a prior town manager did a sidewalk. Would you be amenable to the council possibly having a sidewalk maybe later in the year, a bit warmer?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, that'd be good.
Or if anyone wants to go fishing, you know.
Yeah. Oh, the forum, good for now. So, Councilor Luba?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That was exactly me, the question where I'm looking at this and I'm like, why is this looking so familiar? And like, that's why it was, because I remember that it was one, this part of the larger piece of property that ended up being subdivided. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can see in the map, the Santini land is right on the, uh, eastern part.
Correct, okay. Yeah, just because I remember that we've been discussing this, uh, years ago and, and then we were talking about this and it was just a matter where there was too much, too larger piece of property, yeah, that, you know, that we were, I, I, I remember that we were discussing, we just didn't want to take it bec- or buy it because it was just too large. And there was something that was just too, you know, unreality for us to be part of property that could be developed and couldn't be developed and everything else. So, uh, that if we're going to do this, I think that before we do anything, I'd also want to get a, uh, the lawyer's assessment on it for liability purposes and everything else where, you know, what would our obligation be if we do end up buying this? And then developing these trails as, as well as a blue way trail, you know, what, what is that? Since that would be essentially town property, then what we would need to do and why we would need to, you know, basically control the area or take care of it, especially with open water area like this where, you know, it's sort of difficult to control. And not that I want to control it, but it's just, these are just some of the concerns that, you know, stupid lawyer games that come through my head that, uh, um. So, but, uh, I think this is, I think it's worthwhile, uh, looking into. I think it's something that I would like to, uh, Mr. Chair, when we have an opportunity, uh, weather permitting, to, uh, go out and take another. I think it'd be good for everybody else as well. And, um, and really sort of get an assessment and see really the full kind of development that we have, because this is, I think it was a great beginning, but I'd, I'd like to see more granularity on it as far as, um, what, uh, what it would entail and uh, you know, there's a lot of work there and I know that we would, although I appreciate that we would have the, um, conservation committee doing some of the work. I think that's. Conservation Committee doing some of the work, I think that's something that. Is a significant undertaking and then how we would, would be responsible for developing it and every, uh, and other things, so. But I, that's my main question. There was a long question for, is this a property like that before? So, thank you.
And Jimmy, mind your spot?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in two things. The Willimantic River right now is the way trail. And for kayaking and canoeing, so Tom does have some experience with blue way trails from that perspective and it might. Help to talk to someone about that as well. The grant itself has a deadline coming up very quickly. But if you were to win the grant, you can take two years to construct what you're planning. So I just wanted to put those dates somewhere.
Well, if I mean, so just clarify that, so we, as a matter of where this is just looking for authorization to put in for this permit. Or put in for this grant and then after we, you know, if the grant is approved, then we have two years basically. Figure out what we're going to do with the money, consistent with whatever the proposal is.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. And then one clarifying question, Jim, just for the trail development. You know, this kind of thinking long term, it goes through, we get the grant, we we move forward with all this would be. Management and trail development kind of fall into the same guidelines as the. Trail, especially the trail we have in town, or would there be some uniqueness to this because of that blueway trail?
Um, I think that the way trail really doesn't require any maintenance. The concept is that we would put weighted flags, the marsh is very shallow water. So that, um, weighted flags on boats could be, um, marked along the channel and out into the. Larger marsh, some people don't get lost, because actually when the vegetation comes in, you're really not sure where you are out there sometimes. But the conservation corps would take care of this trail system, just like any other trail that we do now. This is a trail, I think David, mile, mile and a half? Something along that line, you know, we have many, many miles of trails worth taking care of at at this time. And of course, we look for a, um, a steward for this property as well to coordinate those things.
Um, I'm not going to, I presume, but I see one very close to you that might jump on that opportunity. All right, Councilor Murray, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, Steve, can we make sure that the questions? That I emailed in and the answers that, uh, the town manager provided get included in the minutes?
And I also forwarded those to the rest of the council, so everyone got a copy to look at.
Okay. Um, so I. I wanted to thank the town staff for getting those answers to us. Just really quickly, uh, there was a reference to the open space account policy. And some information about the property tax value of the land. Just to understand what might be coming off our property tax books. I think we saw from the pictures and the map that, um, while this land is zoned for residential. It's not really developable land, uh, because you can't develop. Wetlands like that, um, and then there's some more context in my questions about, uh, the total open space and. Um, so I think, thank you for providing the answers to all these questions. I think this sounds like a great opportunity. For some very interesting space in town and and thank you to Mr. Grossman for bringing this to us. Sounds like, uh, your, your family's already enjoying it and I look forward to. Bringing my kayak out too, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murray. Are there any other questions?
Jim, you mentioned that, um, if we do get the grant, the town is responsible for twenty percent. To kick in for that and you mentioned that that part of the labor of constructing these trails could come off of that. Give a sense of how much, um, how much labor that would be and and what what could we expect to have that twenty percent reduced by because of that labor? Any idea or is it too premature?
I I know, yeah, our, our engineer is preparing a cost estimate for each of these items, so that would. You as a member that we can probably.
Depend on. Uh, availability of conservation corps volunteers. Head stewards, steward, as well as if county public works have the capacity to help out with that at all. Which I wouldn't know at this point, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, that was a good question, because I know I think, um, for one, I think Bob had done a pretty good job of enumerating some of the. Labor hours, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
The engineer and Conservation Commission can work well together to get those numbers and do also appreciate recreation, or not recreation. Public Works for all that they've done to help out with like the. Paul Kim like park and I think Campbell, since they've done some help with milling. They'll be on parking lots, so there's a lot of good partnerships there. Are there any other questions from council members? I think otherwise at this point, Brian, I know it says discussion, but are you generally looking for kind of a? A favorable outlook or, uh, perspective from the council moving forward with the grant?
Yep.
Is there anyone that objects to it? I I'm not seeing any, so I think you can go forth and have the process move forward.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right, that finishes new business. We have no old business. That'll bring us to item ten, report of the town manager.
Okay, um, let me jump right out with some of the, uh, over the, since we last met, I've had face to face with the chairs of the inland wetlands. Uh, positive conversation on some of the endeavors currently going on in town. I met with, um, Mr. Maynard of the Bets. To discuss a few different topics, very positive. I met with the historic commission chair today, again, another positive conversation. Uh, as well as the chair of the P C C, um, all within the last week or so, or different topics, just trying to stay on top of things. Uh, moving through the report, you can see, uh, we're, we're, we got a lot of, uh, hiring things going on right now, the assistant human, human services. Uh, Director, uh, we got the, still got that Parks and Rec, uh, position, um, to serve under Bruce, ongoing. Both of those, I believe, are nearing the interview process. We also have a new firefighter, uh, that's currently posted now that we're trying to, um. Get a lot, try to get a lot of people to, and I'll put it on social media to get, get a lot of people to try to hire or get hired to be a fireman here in town. And then obviously we lost Mr. Gary, the children's librarian, so that'll be, um, that'll be going out soon as well. As, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know if I had mentioned, the, the Girl Scouts of America, um, came to me at a relationship that. I I brought when I came here, uh, with them on a lot of different projects and such. Uh, they've, they've gotten, they got rid of a lot of their properties, um, and decided to keep Talon and they are investing just over five million. Uh, in their property above the Girl Scout camps to be their premier, uh, camp facility within the state. We had the, um, president of the, uh, Girl Scouts of America in Connecticut come in. She met with, uh, myself and our buildings department. And she'll work closely, I believe tomorrow morning, there's a meeting up on the property and, uh, Jim will be there from our buildings as well as our. Engineer and that was the conversation I had with our inland wetlands chair. As well, some of the things are, you know, making a beachfront type place on the lake, it's a beautiful lake. They're going to have some cabins, some tents, everything A D A, uh, that they can possibly do up there. They have designs on zip lines one day. Um, you know, everything, obviously, they do is very friendly, um, towards the environment too, so they're very thoughtful on how they. Uh, proceed with that. They are no nonsense in regards to. Like, let's say there's an issue with the sprinkler system, that they'd rather spend the money than not looking to cut corners. So they're, they're, uh, really motivated right now and it's going to be great for the town, a lot of. People coming into our town. I know it's, uh, basically feels like you're driving to Maine and you drive out to that corner of town so far to get out there. It's just beautiful land, beautiful water, uh, and I'm so happy they've, uh, decided to retain Talon and get rid of some other ones on some premier lakes around the state. Uh, so, uh, good, good for us. Our heating program continues to be, uh, robust, a lot of work for our tour staff down there, so that's doing a great job with that. The library continues to move a ton of different, uh, uh, programming in and out of there, they, they do a great job. As you, as some of you may have saw, if you drive down Garing Road, the, um. Firehouse is now a pile of bricks and, uh, it'll be, if you don't go soon, it's going to, the pile of bricks will be gone soon too, as well, that's, will be gone soon as well, so. Uh, that's, that's moving along. I check on the project daily. I drive past it twice a day. As one had mentioned last week, um, I know it's, it's kind of, if you might have already forgotten about it, but John. Chief Lightell, I'm sorry, uh, did a great job managing some of the power routers that we had. Uh, with that freezing cold, uh, and wind. I know it's a couple of weeks old at this point, but we haven't met since then, so I wanted to thank. Uh, his staff for all the callouts that they had and some great jobs with the brush fires over the. Yesterday, a lot of brush fires are in town. And that's all I have right now.
Lord, any questions from council members regarding the manager's report?
Sorry about the beers, sort of, around the world in eighty beers.
Oh, yeah, this is Friday.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, there won't be any, any consumption on site, but it should be a very enriching program. One thing I was going to bring up, Ryan, was the, uh. The grand list letter that you got from Jason Lawrence, I was just curious, um. How you feel about the trends in terms of the revenue increases, uh, assessments, just.
I think that, I think his letter, I mean, I mean, I know of other things going down in town, but I think that's great. Um, I think our town is strong and moving in the right, uh, direction. Uh, I would assume everyone agrees to that, right?
Yeah, so, and obviously it looks like there's a lot of new vehicles being onboarded. I I know that was a discussion, I think, in past years by council is kind of trying to delineate. The assessments and I think council, council manager was brought up the, kind of like Blue Book and changes to state law and, but yeah.
Uh, what about as far as the, um, do we have anything as, uh, as far as projections for a number of houses that have come off, uh, the, um. Unstable soils, the crumbling foundations?
We do and we were doing, we're, we're doing well with that. But the, you do have that down on the Rockville top of mine there and it's going to escape in the name of that. Those were the only really new additions, um, that have come on. But I can, I can get those numbers easily, we're, 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 we're doing well. The exact right one thing she would have on the top of her head. The only issue was those, all those, uh, new, uh, buildings or new additions to the list from those buildings down there.
Okay, I mean, actually, I just found in the letter, twenty seven homes were receiving an assessment production due to crumbling foundation or returning, are returning the whole value, so.
Yeah, I knew I saw it inside there, I just went, so, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Luba. Are there any other questions from council members?
I just have, uh, one. It's not related to whatever we were talking about, but. As the issue has been going on for the last few years about the war issue. I'd like to. Ask, uh, Chair and the town manager that they tend to, as they. Budget time, maybe we can, uh, as we did, uh. Give some, uh, real estate, uh. Taxes, test, we give them big to the taxes for company and foundation, maybe we can consider. You're going to break, uh, whoever's having water issues or whatever it is. Because their house is ready, it's, uh, way down. And I don't think so they can, it's a big problem, it's been going on for, but with no answer. I would like to consider something. And promote it something. Before we pass this budget. Thank you.
I think that would be a really good idea to explore and see what any other towns are doing, I think Ellington, East Windsor, one. One of the Windsor's is setting the same similar issue with, uh, homes, so. Maybe Jason can get their assessors and see. What they're operating for assistance as well as what we've already been doing in the town.
I think that's a decent idea. I was not here. When the idea came to do this for the, the foundation.
Yeah.
Here in town to, um. Basically apply the, the proper foundations to their tax. Who did it? Like, was it this town attorney? Did we hire a consultant? Who did that?
Yeah, that might be a good question to reach out to the, uh. To the assessor's office.
Okay.
Issue that, maybe even, um, Steve Warner is still, I think, the head of SISIC, so.
Yep.
He probably has a good level of insight and history.
Okay.
Background too.
I'm happy to look at that.
I wasn't here last, uh, last year, but. What hap, what's going on with the audience, certainly, anything, any update?
With the what?
Order sixty.
Very good meeting, um.
Because we've been, we've been talking about it for almost about a year now, but.
We had, we're going to, we're going to move it forward pretty quickly now. Uh, Bob Rovino is going to work directly with Jason, who is, uh, very, very. Open to, um, basically. Getting the costs of the program up to where we had wanted to be, the benefit, uh, you know, right now it's probably at about sixty percent. Yeah, the, the, the benefit is being used by our, uh, older residents. We want to get that up to closer to ninety five or so, ninety to ninety five percent. So there's some push in, uh, as we move it, as we move the program up. Bob Rovino, who created the program, I believe, historically, is, is going to work directly with Jason this week, I believe. And to start that process, that will move forward, uh, that is on my list of, um, critical things that I want to get done, so that'll, that'll be done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Uh, any other questions from council members? All right, seeing that, item eleven, adoption of the minutes. I've been pushing to approve the minutes from January twenty fourth, this outline in eleven point one and eleven point two.
So moved.
There a second? All right, so my councilor Luba, so I could, I councilman Uticheck, we'll do a quick roll call votes for hybrid, uh, Councilman Murray.
Hi.
You're calling. By Shereen.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Uticheck.
Hi.
And I'm an I for unanimous, uh, brings us to item twelve, correspondence to council.
Yes. Uh, we had five emails that came in since January twenty fifth. Uh, one regarding the board of education budget, one regarding indoor air pollution, one regarding electric vehicles. One regarding contaminated wells and one regarding a new business ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Councilor Murray. That brings us to thirteen Chairperson's report. Uh, obviously, as it leave tomorrow, Brian, the ribbon cutting, I'll be able to make it, but it's at four thirty up on Merrill Road.
I have a proclamation that I'll, uh, bring there and deliver, um. Try to get Graham Graham to cover for picking up, but I'll be there.
All right, great. Otherwise, Chair Hour, uh, we had two residents show up, one, uh. That covered a lot of the same issues Councilman Murray brought up in terms of communications and then, uh, actually, Mr. Grossman showed up. Shortly toward the tail end, so. It was a good conversation, popular U I E D C issues and, uh, the upcoming, uh. Multi-board meeting that we're shooting for the third Wednesday in May, so we'll get with town staff to try and establish a location and. Get some promotion for that, so we can have a good event. Sounds great. Item fourteen, communications petitions from council persons. I hope everybody has a great Valentine's Day and it's going to love, because obviously we're going into budget season and. Let's keep, let's keep that love in our hearts as we go forward.
I'll be too there.
I bring us to item fifteen, public participation on any subject from the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. And I see Mr. Robert DeRoy, your hand is raised. If you're speaking, Mr. Robert DeRoy, you're still on mute, if you meant to have your hand raised. Right. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Well, we're waiting to see if Mr. DeRoy is on to. All right, well, going once, going twice, we will move to item.
I made it.
Right, right on the hair.
Sorry about that.
The pour is yours.
Yeah, all right, so Robert DeRoy, ninety two, Merlow Way and Talon. Subject is the contaminated well first. I'd like to thank Sammy for bringing up that suggestion. I think that that's something that the town should consider. You know, based on what we've been going through. Another thing that I would bring, I would like to, to recommend. You know, the, the D P H and the D E E P did testing, you know, for a year and they tested every month. What is, is the town in the executive committee that's the special committee that's looking at well water? I would like them to consider maybe some periodic testing to continue to find out what's going on here. It's been. A little bit of a more milder winter, you've changed the material that you've put down on the roads and I think. Some considerations should be, uh, made for. Testing the water and just see if anything is changing. It doesn't have to be every month like that report. But I would consider something maybe like every. But I would consider something maybe like every three months, the town just monitoring what's going on with the water. Um, another thing that I would like to recommend is, there's a, there's a tab on the talon.org website for contaminated wells. I'd like to, I mean, for crumbling foundations, I'd like the town to consider maybe putting something on there for the contaminated wells in order to share information. Um. You know, we, we, we just made a comment, the town is doing well, the grand list is doing well, but we're suffering with water here, so. Um, I want to keep that in the forefront of, of the town council to help, to help all of us, so. Just a few suggestions and I, and I hope that you'll consider those. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. DeRoi, appreciate those suggestions. Are there any other comments from the public? All right, going once, going twice. Item sixteen, I've just had a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one P M. So moved by Councilman Utacheck, is there?
A second.
Seconded by Councilor Luba, and we'll do a quick roll call vote, Council Murray?
Aye.
You're gone.
Hi.
By Shereigan.
Hi.
From Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Utacheck.
Hi.
And I'm an eye says unanimous.